On Tuesday, August 18th, we'll come to order. Christine, is there anything that's not going to be on the agenda that's listed? It's deferred?
No, I took the one off when we revised the agenda. In Matthew's way, the bond estimate wasn't ready. So it'll be instantly.
But everything that's on this is...
I believe so.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, excellent.
Unless somebody doesn't show up.
All right. So let's do the first one. It looks like we have a Form A. Now, I see Marty Larson's here to talk about it. So if you want to come to the mic and first, Christine, if you can give us the short story of what is going on here.
I put a few things up for you. But at 440 Osgood Street, the lot is R2 zoning district, which is 150 feet of frontage, and it requires 43,560 square feet. This A and R will produce two buildable lots with frontage and access on Osgood Street. Lot 2A will have 237 feet of frontage and 102,621 square feet of acreage. Lot 2B will have 150 feet of frontage and 55,035 square feet of acreage. So they're two.
So can you show us the plan?
Yep. And the application. There we go. And try and blow that up a little. And the applicant is here.
Okay.
Okay.
You could identify yourself for the record.
My name is Martha Larson, and my husband, Arthur, and I own these two parcels. Right now, it's a single parcel, and we are downsizing. We're selling 440. Actually, it has sold, but we are not selling the lot next to it. We're going to split that off and make it available to the buyer if they decide they want it, but otherwise, we'll sell it as a separate lot.
Okay. So you're just carving off the property into two.
Yeah.
So, okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I just think...
Anybody know where it is?
Yes.
I do.
Okay. This is the Samuel Osgood House on Osgood Street.
Yes. Is that the... It's one of the oldest houses in North Andover, right?
1740.
Yeah.
And believe it or not, it's only been on the market twice since it was built, when we bought it and when we sold it. It's incredible, but...
Should've had Ben come in. He could've given tutorial tonight.
Geez. Different branch of the Osgoods.
Yeah.
But it will be sold with covenants held by Historic New England, so...
There are?
There will be.
Are there covenants on the house?
Not now, but there will be.
Oh, there will be. Good for you.
Yeah, but not on the lot.
On the lot.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we're splitting that off.
Okay.
The covenants will cover the house and lot, you know, that we're selling, but not the spinoff.
But with the option that the buyer may buy that lot possibly.
Yes, yeah, we've offered them first choice.
The only thing I saw is not the correct... There's no notation. It just says Lot 2A and 2B. It doesn't say where the old lot was, and it doesn't say any notations on the...
Well, let's see.
So we need...
In this corner, Lynn?
Can you make it a little bit bigger?
Which section would you like to...
Just... No, that's off the... You gotta bring it a little over this way.
The locus?
Well, let's...
I'm not sure.
No, not the locus, but to Lynn's point, there's not a description... Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, there's no description of the original lot on this plan, so they just have to fix it because is it Lot 2 now currently? Are you splitting?
No, it's... Will be 2B that we're splitting out.
But is it part of Lot 1? See, yet that's...
Flip over, yeah.
The original parcel was five acres.
No, no, the other way.
Do you want to go the other way?
Yeah, okay.
Or up top?
Yeah, that's...
Oh, right up there? Is that what you're looking for?
Do you see where it says Lot 1, and then there's Lot 2? So are you retaining other land to the other...
Yes, yeah. The... As I say, it was five acres. We split off a lot for our daughter, and actually, that's where we're going to move to. So we will...
But Lot 1 was already split off.
That's been split off, right?
Split off. So what you're doing to Lynn's point is you're taking Lot 2 and breaking it into 2A and 2B.
That's correct.
Yeah, so the only thing that we would want is just if you could put a note someplace as saying that that's what you're doing on the plan.
And then you have to put some sort of, you know, notation of what the, you know, around Lot 2A, 2A and 2B were lot 2 lots, and that you're splitting Lot 2 into 2A and 2B. Because there's no... It doesn't show Lot 2 anywhere there, what the existing lot is.
That is Lot 2, what you're seeing there.
Which one is Lot 2?
Both of them together.
Right, but it doesn't say it on the plan, so that's both registered.
So if... Yeah, you just need to... You can say Lot 2 equals what was formerly Lot 2A and Lot 2B, and as long as you have a note that does that, that explains. Because a lot of time... This is a pretty clean one because all it's doing is it's not changing any other lot lines. It's effectively what it's doing is it's putting a lot in the middle, a line in the middle, that creates two lots out of one. And that's... We just want to make sure for the... As Lynn said, for the registry, that there's an explanation of what happened.
Okay.
Christina, you were going to ask a question.
I think I should say it's the two together make all of two. 2A and 2B together make two.
Yeah. So what I would say is... Any other questions? If we could maybe make a motion to direct the planner to sign the Form A pending the addition of a suitable note on the Form A.
Move we direct the planner to sign the approval not required with an added note indicating that lots 2A and 2B consist of the original one lot, number two. Is that close enough?
Close enough, so...
Okay.
Somebody like to make a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. John, what do you know?
What do you do? Just once you...
Ask him with your surveyor, and we'll fix the miles large to have the note that they're looking for, and we'll call you when that's ready to be recorded.
Super.
Okay?
The next item is Regency Place. Is this... Oh, it's not a public hearing, this is.
No, it's a very... It's kind of a minor comment. I sent you guys a letter from Gene. I do have the signed copy. As you know, Regency Place, we just closed on that subdivision, and we're trying to wrestle with a lot release, and the legal paperwork is dealing with three decisions and two sets of plans. And between Gene and the town attorney, and myself, and the attorney for the developer, we've just been trying to meld them all, and it was very frustrating for Gene. And one of the things that got lost in the path was the ownership of an easement. In the original definitive and the original PRD decision for Regency Place, the drainage, one of the easements, access and utility easement, was given to the town. And in the modification, it was changed to the homeowners' association. And I couldn't find anything in your minutes that reflected if you had intended to make it transferred to the homeowners, or if it was just kind of a clerical error in transcribing three decisions. So Gene would very much like that to be for the town, and we've crafted all the other easements and deeds.
Now, the thing I'm... This letter...
This was a letter from him?
No, no, he has a letter, but his...
Yeah.
The thing you just mentioned, is that on this letter?
No, it was a part of it. This was... He was kind of... I think he just sent the letter to the board because he was, like I said, he was frustrated. The process was pretty cumbersome for us, but would you like to see the decision?
No, I'm just trying to figure out what we're being asked to do.
I'll show you. This is the modification. And I don't know if you recall if there was a reason you switched it to the homeowners. If you do recall, that would be helpful. Okay, it's this one. Number four. The easement document describing the utility and access easement as shown on the plan to be located on Lot 4, which is now Lot 7, will contain language allowing public pedestrian access across this easement. As stated in item number three, this easement will be granted to the homeowners. This was the modification that added the two house lots. Do you remember?
Can you pull up the plan to this? But can you pull up the plan where this easement is on that block?
Actually, I don't know if I brought the plan there, but I have it here. I have the two plans for you here. This is the modification. This is the modification. You go, please.
Yeah, Mr. Christensen, while we're here, do you have a stake in this one, or can you introduce some clarify?
We didn't do the modification.
Okay, okay.
Where's the easement?
I'm assuming the easement is between Lot 4 and lots...
Oh, which is this the first set of plans or the second set?
That's the second set.
So it's going to be at lots...
Do you want to see the first one too?
No, I want to see lots... Oh, yeah, Lot 4. Yeah, I want to see the easement on Lot 4 because I'm pretty sure I know why.
First one, okay. This is the first set of plans.
Just pull up the page with the easement. Lot 4.
Proposed access. Yeah.
Okay. It was supposed to be both, actually. That's the... One is they wanted to get... We wanted to give it to the HOA, and one we also wanted to give the town a right to, not that we were going to maintain it.
On the... This is a...
Let's see where it falls on.
Yeah.
Can you pull up down the modification?
Yeah.
The modification discussion?
Where it got changed, yeah. Is that the first... No, pull up the first one.
The definitive or the...
Well, which... I... There's no title on it right here on the screen. Is this the second one or the first?
This is the modification.
Okay, if you can pull up the first one, please.
Yeah.
See, if you look where the line comes off Appleton Street. Where it's really this side of the easement there.
Well, right, but the point that Lynn made is with the original subdivision...
It's number 4 here.
Was the...
Oh, it's 4 and both.
In the original subdivision, who is the open space granted to?
It's not declared. It just, I think, it mentions just that it'll be chosen.
No, the open space went to the town on this one.
Or is it... Did it go to the town in this one?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out because it typically, if there's open space, will either... We usually want to give it to the town, but in some cases, it may be a homeowners' association if it's not contiguous to something else, and we want somebody else to maintain it. What I can't tell is what's the sequence of steps here from the beginning to where we are now?
This one definitely was contiguous. It was a contiguous area. This one's against the rail trail.
Right, so I think this is a situation where we would want to...
But there was some swales that we... The HOA was going out to maintain.
Right, okay. So again, I guess I go back to... Are we dealing with a very narrow situation that only deals with a small part of the... What part of the problem are we dealing with? Because I'm...
They just... They... The attorneys and the town wanted clarification if you had intended for that utility and access easement to go to the homeowners, if there was a reason for that change.
It was supposed to go to both. There's supposed to be access for both, I believe. Because that was where... That's also the paper trail street.
The easement document. So it's a little bit without having the two documents. I mean, can you back solve from the two sets of decisions to figure out where something went off? Because it's hard just looking at it here.
Three planners. Some of them are drafted by two different planners, too. We looked at all the... Like I said, we melded both plans, three decisions, and this is the only thing that was left out that was not consistent. It seems, you know, it just doesn't seem like there's any reason why you wouldn't want the town to have the easement for the access and utility. I mean, everything else was transferred correctly between the decisions.
Okay, so this is condition four, as the easement document has shown on the plan. We look at Lot 4. That's it. Okay. Okay, then go to the updated decision.
Do you want the modified one again?
Well, whatever is the last one.
Yep.
So can you look at this? Compare the two documents next to each other.
This is 2013, right? So homeowners, town in North Andover, and homeowners, homeowners, homeowners. So the original one was homeowners, town, and now the 2015 one is homeowners, homeowners.
Correct. It looks like it should've been town.
I think it's a typo.
I think it's a typo.
I mean, I can't see any reason why you would exclude the town from the easement.
From utilities.
Yeah. Where I can see where adding the homeowners' association to the town is just repetition. I mean, obviously, if they're in the town.
So is that... What do you think? I mean, I would agree with that, but it's...
I believe we wanted both. I think we added the homeowners.
Why would you want the homeowners?
Because it was the paper street and...
But it...
Well, you wouldn't... If you had the town, by definition, the homeowners would have access to it.
That's right. They'd be included with that.
Yeah.
Because all we were trying to do was to get access and, you know, so that you could put a trail along there.
Right. So...
But does it hurt to have both? Or does it make sense?
Doesn't hurt. Belt and suspenders never is a problem, so...
But you could put...
The town just wants, you know, DPW wants to have...
The opportunity to have that easement for the town.
Well, I think...
I think it was intended. I do not see anything in the minutes of that particular meeting of the modification that there was two meetings that indicated any reason why you would've changed that.
Okay.
So I... I believe we added homeowners, and I think it was worth it in a proper way.
So why don't we just add the town into that?
Add the town.
I don't know what we would need to do to do that, whether we would have to actually formally modify the thing again, or whether that's a de minimis exception that might be allowed.
I might have my notes on that, still.
If you make a motion, I can at least share that with the attorneys so that... Because they've been trying to release a lot and clear a sale and clear up... Make sure we have the legal language correct on all the easements, so...
So why don't we... Maybe somebody can make a motion that it's a dissent of the board, or that consider judgment of the board like that.
That it's a check for...
Yeah, that it should include the town.
Town.
Yeah.
It should include the town and homeowners.
And the town should be added.
It's a clerical error.
The town should be added.
Town should be added.
Yeah, yeah. So...
Second.
Should be made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
201 Sutton. This is a...
Okay, we're 1-2, 330 Marble Ridge.
3... Oh, sorry, 330 Marble Ridge. Go back. Thank you. 330 Marble Ridge. Okay, I'll give you a little update, and I believe the applicant is here. 330 Marble Ridge. The owner applied for a building permit to remove an existing shed and replace it with an expanded... Excuse me, remove an existing deck and replace it with an expanded deck. The property is located within the watershed district and has some bordering vegetated wetlands on the edge of the property. The wetlands are greater than 100 feet from the home and outside structures, so the conservation commission has determined it's out of their jurisdiction. The home was built before 1994. The pool and deck are roughly 175 feet from the wetlands, therefore, it's in the no discharge zone. I did forward this plan to Lisa Eggleston. I was just checking on her availability for review before her vacation, and she sent back comments that the project appeared minor in nature and recommended additional crushed gravel under the deck and some landscaping. The area to be modified is within this enclosed fence and a retaining wall. Clearly, the lot is fairly wooded. I reviewed the... But to me, a waiver is sort of something I defer to the board on if you feel that he can waive the watershed permit based on Lisa's comments. So the applicant is here, and I'm happy to put the pictures of the deck plan up if you'd like to see those. Okay. Let's see if I've got a couple pictures. Oh, I think you want this one. Okay. And I'm sorry, I can't rotate it.
Okay.
I don't think so. But gives you an idea.
Thank you.
Gives you an idea, so...
So if you could identify yourself for the record and sort of give, from your perspective, a short story of what you're trying to do.
You got it. My name is Jason Newton. My wife and I both reside at 330 Marble Ridge Road. And, yeah, so we currently have a deck now. It's about, you know, 12 by 12 feet. It's falling down, and we're looking to expand on either side of that deck. And essentially, what, you know, we were actually told is to maybe have some, you know, crushed gravel underneath where that deck would be for the runoff. And we've... There's actually a set of patio stones to the left. Underneath the patio stones is actually a bed of crushed rock. Into the right was actually just some dirt. I actually have placed some rocks in there. And as you can see, it's actually all behind a retaining wall.
And which is the right?
I'm sorry. Yeah, the right is on the bottom. So I've got some new... Some rocks there that were... The deck will be extended. And then on the other side of that, which you really can't see in that photo, there's actually another retaining wall that runs perpendicular with the other retaining wall.
And that's all there today?
Oh, yeah, it's all there. Yeah, that's much clearer. So the fence is to the right of the chimney there, and then it drops down, and there's a retaining wall there as well.
You should remember, you are right. So essentially, you're just building up on the left side.
To the left and the right. So as you can see where the deck ends on the left, it actually is going to expand over to where that gorilla is.
Okay. And now how about... How far going to the right?
Into the right, just to the right side of that chimney.
Okay, so you're basically just going, I don't know, maybe 3, 4 feet?
That way, it's actually deceiving. It's probably about, I'd say, 7 feet, maybe? And in the other direction, I think it's more like 15, maybe?
And there's crushed stone under there now.
There's crushed stone on the existing deck. That's always been there. I just put some stone to the right side where the chip... In front of the chimney there. And then to the left side, there's actually patio stones there, but there's a bed of crushed stone underneath the patio stones.
And is there any landscaping that will be done other than the crushed stones that you've already spoken about?
I didn't... So I didn't plan on doing anything because, well, on the right-hand side, it's going to be covered by the deck, so there's really nothing. On the other side of that fence on the right, there are actually some native plants over there as well. Oh, and to, you know, obviously, there's a pool in front of 40 or 50 percent of it.
So in Lisa's email, Lisa Eggleston's email, she comments that, you know, any... If there is any landscaping beyond the stones, that it be native species and not require, you know, as much watering and chemical application, given the location. But it sounds to me like you're saying there is some native landscaping, but you're not really planning to add landscaping other than the crushed stone?
Nope, I didn't plan on adding any greenery anywhere. I actually don't know where I would.
It doesn't seem like there's going to be running water anymore than is there now.
Just on the right-hand side, are you going to... Looks like that is a slope going to drop off. Are you going to level that off at all, or...
We didn't plan on it. We... I guess we could if we needed to build up the retaining wall.
No, no, with the steps aren't existing now?
Oh, 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 actually, those...
Drop down.
So those don't... Those steps are being removed. They're going to be straightened, and they're going to be composite steps there.
What about the land on that side?
Oh, underneath the steps?
Yeah.
I actually don't know what they're doing.
Okay.
I don't know. I...
Because that, I think, that's where you'd have runoff from on that side where there is no retaining wall. I think it is minor, but I think we still have to do some sort of conditions like that...
Well, I think what you can do is... What I would recommend that you do is say wave site plan review, sort of subject to the applicant doing ABC, and leave it at that. Because this really, at least in my mind, is de minimis. It's... There's... Think about it. There's no more impervious surface. Arguably, there's less impervious surface. It's not creating any, you know, bathrooms, roof lines, any of those sorts of things, so it really is going to have minimal impact. And as long as they do, you know, just... Why don't you just send Christine a note with one or two things that you have?
Just to make sure, yeah, the data stake off that side where the slope's off, and they don't have a bunch of runoff when they demo everything, you know, with that law.
Yeah, so... Jen, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So you want a condition during construction?
Yeah, basically, I think the motion is somewhere along the lines as well wave site plan review, subject to the applicant doing a couple minor things that Lynn will give you what they are. So somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we waive the watershed special permit for 330 Marble Ridge Road, subject to the applicant agreeing to follow some standard conditions, and if there are any plantings, that they be native species plantings.
Second.
Motion made at second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, 201 Sutton Street.
This project came in very recently. The applicant... I mailed you a decision from 1997, and the decision states that the applicant's allowed to have 19 beds for a dialysis center. And if they exceed that, or they would have to come back before the planning board. So it's been in business and has an operation with 22 beds. And so their operation is not in compliance with their... And so, their operation is not in compliance with their, the language of the special permit of site plan review. And it's a dialysis center. I did look at your decision, and I looked in particular at your comments on parking. And usually, when you're increasing a business, you're worried about parking, but they have assured me that about half of their patients are actually being dropped off, because they're receiving treatment, and they don't drive. So, they don't have a lot of vehicles in the lot. But, again, it required a trip back to the planning board for a decision. It came up, it wasn't enough time to notice this legally, so I wasn't sure. I was going to put it on as a discussion item, and when I spoke with the applicant today, she expressed to me that she sort of had an early September deadline for a state health licensing issue. And so, I wasn't certain if you'd be compelled to act this evening on their behalf. If, you know, if you feel that you'd like it publicly noticed, we can bring it back for September 1st. So, I'll put the decision up, if you'd like, and the applicant is here, and she can speak to it. You want the picture of the area?
Is there anything more that, beyond that picture that we have here?
I brought the files from '97 of a site plan, if you'd like that, and the decision.
Do we need a request for modification?
Well, that's what I think we have to decide. I mean, we ought to maybe talk about the substance of it, and then see what it is procedural that we have to do. I have my opinion, but...
I'll bring you to the point in the decision where it mentions the limit, and then you can ask the applicant.
So, for what it's worth, if you noticed the names on that thing-
We did.
And now, Allison Lescoeur was the first woman member of the planning board. Yes, yeah.
Groundbreaking.
Yes, groundbreaking, yeah.
I think John had a couple of cabins for the-
Yep. Oh, right here, special conditions right there. There shall be no more than 19 dialysis stations at the site.
It's a pretty clear cut, isn't it?
How long have they been 22?
We presented our plans to the town of North Andover. They were all approved, and so, I believe, I received certification on June 16th to utilize 22 stations from the Department of Health.
June 16th of this year?
Of 2015.
Yeah, but how long has it been, 22 beds?
That's when we renovated. We presented all of our plans to the town of North Andover, not realizing that we needed to come before the board. That's kind of an unusual step for a dialysis clinic. Normally, we go through the Department of Public Health. So, I actually just found out about this from the building inspector, who came in early August to see me, to let me know that we'd missed a step with this. What's happened is, it's holding up my Department of Safety inspection, and without a renewed Department of Safety inspection, I, my license to operate expires on September 2nd. So, I will have 114 dialysis patients with no place to treat.
Just one question.
Well, you could do with 19 beds.
If you, in terms of the getting the permit from the state, if you just did that with 19, you could get that?
Well, my understanding from the inspector was, until this is cleared up, I cannot move forward with my safety inspection.
Which inspector, I'm sorry?
The building inspector.
The safety ins- the building inspect- the town building inspector there?
Yes, the town building inspector came. He assured me that we had gone through all the appropriate steps, but then someone brought to their attention that we should have come before the board first. We had no copy of that previous decision.
How many square feet are in the station?
I'm sorry?
How many square feet internally are there in the building? I mean, it's a bed and machinery?
Yeah, I think that the Department of Public Health in Massachusetts, I believe it's between 12 and 16 square feet per station.
Christine, in the original application, who was the applicant?
Brennan's Dialysis Clinic, R N E X.
They own the building?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Are there other tenants in the building?
No.
Have you done a parking study for us, or anything, given us any more information in the meantime, between June and now, so we could, is there, have you gone out there and consulted?
Well, again, I found out the first week of August, from the building inspector, that I needed to contact the planning board.
I guess my question is, why did you increase from 19 to 22? Did you build more space?
Because every, because every dialysis center in this area is filled to capacity, and-
Did you build on to the building?
No, no.
You're just utilizing more space?
We utilized more space to accommodate more patients.
Just suppose-
Those are specific comments.
Just suppose you needed 10 more spaces next year?
We couldn't do it.
You couldn't? You don't have any more, any room to expand?
No, and we could add more shifts, but we could not add more stations.
Well, I think we have to find a way to get past this date, so that the use doesn't blow up, but we still have to retain a prerogative to approve this. So, Christine, what's the way we get through the hurdle here? I mean, I still don't understand why the building inspector is the, you know, is the one who's saying, "You can't do this, or you can't do that." I'm still not completely sure how that plays into this.
You know, honestly, I think, you know, sometimes you start researching something, and something else pops up. And I think that this decision came up, and they saw the limit of 19, and then, you know, the confusion ensued what to do, and there was a deadline coming. And I, like I said, I'm not familiar enough with your procedures with minor, a minor modification. It's internal. But, this decision was pretty clear to come back to the board, so I feel that you do. I saw, I did find a notice of decision of insubstantial change from another business. You have a findings of fact and any conditions, if that's, if you determine it to be minor?
Well, the thing about it is, that in this case, since the condition is so obvious, so blatant, so clear, it's not something we just, "Oh, well," you know, because what's gonna happen is, it's such precedent, and everybody will just go do what they want, because nothing that we say matters anymore. But, what I don't understand is why this business turns into a pumpkin on September 2nd, because of what the building inspector said.
Yeah. I think the deadline was her deadline, with her license, not the building inspector's deadline.
But, what, why would the two things even impinge on each other, is, I guess, is, if we do this in September, what difference does it make?
At the next meeting?
Or the meeting after, after we notice it and treat it according to proper process. I think the question is, I think, someone said that the building inspector said, "You can't go ahead with your safety inspection until this is resolved." That's what we're asking, right? Who says?
Yeah, we have something from the building inspector of that effect?
I do not have anything writing, pal.
Is, and who's the, who's the inspection authority that does your safety inspection?
It's the Department of Public Health, and it's Mr. Bennett.
The town, or the state?
The state.
The state.
Mm-hmm.
Have they said that they won't go ahead with this until this is resolved?
They have not said that to me, but that is what Mr. Brown relayed to me, the building inspector, from the town. He made a special visit to me, and that's what he relayed to me, that I cannot get that license renewed until, that inspection renewed, until this is cleared up with the town.
And how long is the license for? Is it a one-year, five-year?
It's a two-year license.
Okay. I think that, we have two, we have two ways. We can do a waiver for Mr. Brown, that will waive the amount of beds for a month, so we can get it resolved, and allow him to do the safety inspection. And then, we also have the leverage, that we also, the license would get revoked if she doesn't come back to us, you know, but it'd be two years, but we'd still, if she, if it doesn't come back and get resolved satisfactorily to us, then we wouldn't do it for the next period.
Do you recall why?
Because I don't, I don't know enough information on it to make any decision.
Because that's what they posed.
Oh, okay. Is it a per-
Why can't we do 19 right now?
Make them remove beds, and that's in the next two weeks, is, it may be, this may be de minimis, but I don't know, that's a lot of work.
But, why can't we do, for the purpose of the licensing, approve the 19 and bring them back?
Because my beds are full. I have no place to put those patients.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, our, we want to make sure that, from our perspective, that people comply with our rules. And in the end, if we can get this approved, I don't mind cutting some slack for a short period of time, because, I mean, it is a life and death thing. I mean, this is, you know, this is not sort of taking the table out of the restaurant or something like that. It's a little bit more serious matter. You know, I wish it didn't come to this. I mean, it feels like we're being backed into a corner here, but I kind of liked the way Lynn, you laid that out, is, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we have, I mean, if we can't come to a resolve, then, I mean, we can also tell that it's temporary with the building inspector, too, so.
What would stop us from not approving 22, assuming you had gone?
I don't know yet, because we don't-
No, but, but just-
Well, the thing we don't know is, we don't know how full the parking lot is. There's, you know, Christine, I don't even know if you've been going out there in the middle of the day. We haven't given neighbors a chance to opine on it. We, for all we know, they may be crazy about this place.
I really don't even know what the building looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I do.
I don't know, it's off-set, I just can't place it from the aerials.
Christine, can the cat?
Yeah, but I just can't, I know exactly where it is, but I just can't place-
That's our easy shit.
Yeah, I mean, I've driven by it enough, that, I mean, I, my wife gets physical therapy out there, and I come around to the-
Yeah, but I just, I don't think I've been in a parking lot or anything like that, to know any enough about it, too.
Look, what, just a suggestion, remember, we've done restaurants that said, "We will investigate the parking again in six months," or, we could say, "We would investigate the parking in three months." In the meantime, go through the full, you know-
That's what we're saying.
Well, that's basically what we're-
But have a specific thing that we can identify.
Well, I don't want to be specific, because I don't have enough information about this, because I don't know if it's only parking, I don't know if there's a pedestrian problem, I have no idea.
Or there's a neighborhood concern.
We're guessing, or if there's a neighborhood concern about trash, so I'm not gonna be specific at this point on what we're reviewing. We were right to review everything, because they want a modification. You know, that's what modifications do, give you rights that over.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a reasonable approach to sort of the impasse here, of something temporary that requires coming back, so that we can address what the board has said before.
That was the quick decision, but one in bold, I mean, there had to have been some reasoning logic for it.
So, could you state that again, in the form of a motion?
Okay, let's see. I'll make a motion to direct the building inspector, or allow the building inspector to provide a temporary waiver from 19 beds to 22, to 22, for a period not to exceed three months?
Three months, yeah.
And that the applicant will have to file a formal modification, right?
Pending approval of the applicant's special, a change of, what is it? It's not the change, it's not a change of use.
Oh, no.
So, it's not a modification to a site plan review?
The modification to a site plan review, yeah. That's, yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
That means that you've got to get that thing kind of started, too.
I just need to know how to do that.
Well, I think the, yeah.
Thank you.
Christine can help you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you don't want to have people dying of kidney problems. And I know that I has, that I has this problem, but you're just talking about.
Okay, moving on to the main card here. Ding ding ding, 602 Barkford Street, Wellington Way. So, do you want to give us the short story on this before we begin?
I will. As you know, we opened the public hearing at the last meeting on 602 Barkford. It's a subdivision for seven lots. There were several comments from different departments, sent to you in your packet, and the, so we've received most of the comments back, and I began to draft a template of the decisions for the PRD special permit, to allow the clustering of the subdivision, and then, the regular definitive draft as well. What you have in your packet is the boilerplate conditions, that I kind of looked at three decisions today to draft those. I did not add additional.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've done enough PRDs in the past, that you should be able to build off of those.
So, what you have are the boilerplates, the extra findings are for you.
Well, the public hearing's still open, so I'd rather focus on what's still open, than on the decision, so.
So, the applicant's here, he can address any other questions you have.
What issues are open, related to drainage or anything else?
Lisa reviewed the drainage a couple of times. They went back and forth with the DPW comments, water, and Lisa, and I believe Phil has addressed them all, to her satisfaction. Conservation Commission sent in a letter about the open space and trails.
Which is, what do they want?
They're interested in the open space being preserved. And, because it connects, there's adjacent town-owned open space from the other subdivision. And fire resolved a matter today about the sprinklers. They're satisfied that it does not require sprinkling, and I think that's it, so.
Phil, do you want to, for those that forget everything?
There was something in conservation-
Yes.
Where they sort of left open, that they assumed that that would be in their statement of conditions, but it-
Let's see if I can find that.
Yeah. Okay, the last sentence in that. I'm not sure that that's something that we need to act on, but it was something I saw that was still open. What was it? What was the last name? Oh, the potential of vernal pools.
Oh, okay, sure. We met with conservation, and there's a large wetland on the site, as you know, as we've shown. And within the wetland, there are vernal pools, but they're within the limit of the wetland. So, as far as this application went, conservation was satisfied, we weren't doing any work within 75 feet, so that meets their rules with regard to vernal pools. But, they would like us to go back in and certify those vernal pools next spring. It won't have any effect on the subdivision, but for whatever reason, they'd like to have them certified. So, that's not a problem to us, because it doesn't really change the project. The other thing conservation wanted, they wanted some trails through the open space. Our position on that is, well, we're not quite sure where the open space will go. It may stay with the homeowners. We may offer it to the town, but we are talking with Natural Heritage about them accepting the open space. So, and because it is a rare and endangered species habitat, I don't know what the feeling of the Natural Heritage people is about a trail, so.
Well, the, where is the part that has the National Heritage significance?
Well, all of the property is within an area they designate as rare and endangered species habitat, so priority habitat.
Oh, okay.
Everything, including the upland.
Don't you think seven houses might make a difference there? I mean-
Well, that's one of the things that, just get a federal-
You know, what they try to do is, is look at it and say, "Is this gonna be detrimental to the habitat of the rare and endangered species?" And we started, before we even started on this project, we met with Natural Heritage, and-
The turtles actually overwinter south of here.
They don't, they don't live on this parcel. So, Jesse Lettich is the fellow we work with out there. He said, "This is a foraging habitat, so in the summertime, they start walking across the street, and then they come up in here and feed." So, as long as we were 75 feet away from the wetland, he was happy about that. What we'll do, and we're working with them now, is to put preservation restrictions on what's left as the open space, that they're comfortable with. And also, we need to have a turtle monitoring program while the construction's going on, so somebody walks around the perimeter to be sure that the turtles-
Can we get that gig?
Yes. Please, I gotta deal with this. So, that's what Natural Heritage is doing, so. So, anyway, but they might be interested in acquiring that land, because they might think it's important to just stay as open space, not affected by trails going through it. There were also some butters, were they planning or conservation?
Conservation.
There were some butters here at the conservation meeting, that didn't want any trails at all, because they live on Duncan Drive, and they don't want people-
Duncan Drive is just over here, and they don't want people walking around in their backyards.
backyards. And they complained that the trails that are out there aren't maintained, and there's a bridge across the stream at the end of Duncan Drive that's broken down, and nothing's taken care of, so.
But wasn't this the project, we asked if there was any trails that we wanted to connect? And are we finding out from Jennifer, there are some trails we want to connect?
I don't know, she knows that there's trails to connect.
We asked to check on this, so. There's some trails out there that people are complaining about, and.
There was some comment, Lynn, about a trail at the end of Duncan Drive.
Yeah.
Yes.
We want to connect, want to make sure that we can connect the two of the works.
It's kind of, you know, if, our position is, look, if, if we don't turn it to Natural Heritage, or SS County Green Belt, and the decision is made to turn it over to the town, then what we'll do is provide the amenities the town wants when we turn it over to them. But, one other thing Conservation said, well.
You know, you have to put some parking in here, so people can without walk.
Well, the problem is.
You don't really have, this is, this is a hill going up here, with drainage swales coming down to the LID design of the project, so it isn't a convenient place to park in here. And, you know, you put in four more parking spaces, say, I mean, that's expensive, but it's also more pavement.
I mean, we've, I don't think we've ever, on inside a subdivision, done separate parking for the trail access. I mean, in the property we buy, for the town, we always do that, but we don't do it for these sorts of things, so.
And the other thing Conservation wanted, one of the members said, we'll just draw a trail on here, and we'll have that. Well, this is very heavily forested, and I, if I just draw something on there, I don't know if I'm going through a 30-inch pine tree or, you know, around it. And I think if you do go, a trail's got to be laid out, and it has to meet certain standards.
Remind us, again, of the, first of all, where the wetland is, and how much of the open space is upland, and where that upland is clustered.
Okay. This whole parcel is about 17 acres, about five acres will be developed, the rest is open space. And on the cover sheet, let's see, we have, of the 11 acres, 11.8 acres, I believe, total open space, and 4.7 acres, the 4.2 acres is wetland, and 7.627 is woodland, upper.
Can you show us on the photograph where the wetland areas are?
I'm going to, the left quadrant.
Well, you can do it there, you can do it right there.
Where is he? It is, yeah.
Right, right.
And where's the trail behind Duncan Drive?
That they're complaining about, that's not used. It's not used, no one's cutting through the backyard.
It's my understanding, at the end of Duncan Drive, is a trail comes up here, and there's a stream runs through here, and it just hasn't been maintained, that's it, I have not seen it.
I volunteered on one of the trail cleanups.
Okay. So, we, I, I feel like we need to do a little bit more work to get a very clear-cut idea where all the trails are, and what the Conservation Commission really wants, to make a determination about whether we, we want to push something or not, and, I mean, Jennifer should probably know that, I would presume, she should have all that information, right? So, probably, if you could just meet with her.
I think, just as Jennifer said in her note, there's only about 5,000 square feet of buffer zone disturbance on this project within their jurisdiction, and technically, they don't have any, we meet their rules and regulations, so they can't really impose anything on the project with regard to the open space.
No, but I'm not looking at it from their, their context of their jurisdiction, I'm looking from the context of our jurisdiction, about how we establish and set up the governance for the open space. And so, I'm just suggesting, is, I, I understand where you're coming from, and it may very well be that trails are not feasible on this property, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm merely observing that, I, I think from what we've seen so far, you can't tell if there's a natural connection that we would lose as a result of this. If, if there isn't, then maybe we don't do it, but if there is, maybe we would. And, and I also understand your, your comment about National Heritage, maybe, maybe it makes sense for them to do it. I, I don't know yet, I mean, I think we just have to do a little bit more work to figure that answer. I don't know if anybody else has a strong opinion, you know?
You know, if National Heritage did want it, it seems like this isn't an ideal place for a town use for any sporting events, it would only be for a natural trail, and, you know, the National Heritage does as good a job as anybody.
Well, they're not going to do anything.
Well, but they'll at least maintain it.
I mean, you know, I, they may be a, they're not going to do any stewardship on the land at all, I mean, they're just going to make sure that people don't, you know, kill the turtles, I suppose, but, Pete?
What you said makes sense. It would be nice to know what is the status of the trails. We talked about it at the last meeting?
Yes.
And we don't, we still don't understand what it is, so presumably Jennifer would know, and I think it's worth doing the homework and coming back?
No.
Okay. Do you have any? Okay, so is there anything else that's?
Could that just be a condition of an approval? Do we work on that? Because I don't, you know, if we're dealing with Natural Heritage, things aren't going to move too quickly.
Well, here's, here's, here's what I would recommend that we do. As we always do, we're going to keep, well, first of all, let me ask you a question, is there anything else that's open that we need to address, that's a significant open issue on this?
On this one?
Yeah.
It's, it's not, in my mind, substantial. You, you all went through the preliminary subdivision with them, so that was right before I started here, so I'm under the impression that you're pretty familiar with this subdivision plan, and that you're okay with the general look of it, so.
Well, no, but I mean, based on the hearing last week, we identified, or any issues, we identified of an engineering nature of analysis.
I think Lynn had asked some questions about the drainage, and how the street, how it entered the street, and I'm hoping Phil will talk about that in a little bit. Other than the environmental review, and any revised, a couple of storm drain issues, I'm not sure that anything else is out there.
Okay, well, we're all good with, Lisa Aggleston had some good comments, we've changed the things, and she's accepted the plan as it stands.
What about the Public Health? Because.
Board of Health wrote a letter.
Yeah, and so, my understanding of the letter is, this is dated August 12th. One point was, septic plans have not been received to date, so cannot make comments at this time, and also a comment about the size of the leaching beds, support three-bedroom houses, if larger homes are proposed, they would need a footprint increased a few hundred square feet. So, I think at least those two things.
No, that subdivision control law does not require septic systems to be designed during this process. What it requires is, you do test pits to show that the land is suitable for septic systems.
Right.
Now, we've done test pits on every lot, and we showed that every lot can have a system, and Board of Health should not comment on design at this point.
Well, you're right, but I think your point is beside point, in that, there's, there's very few reasons why we, we can, as a planning board, reject a subdivision, and one of them is Board of Health considerations. I mean, you know, so you look at how far it is, well, if, if indeed, you're right, that if, to the extent that there's huge perk problems in the thing, we'd say, hey, we can't approve this, fine. That's not the case, but that does not mean that we can't condition the, the decision to say that if septic designs don't work, or require you to build a house of a certain size, or any other sort of thing that basically throws a lot out, that we can't force you to come back, or that we can't say, if you can't get the design to work, that lot's unbilled.
I can, but I mean, that's, that's a little redundant, because if we can't design it, we don't get approved to build a house, and you don't have a lot.
Well, yeah, I know that, but I, I've seen it in the past, so I, I think that, you know, Pete's point is, we continue, I think you got to go back and forth with them, with the Board of Health, and.
Board of Health, I don't think.
Make sure that, what, what I don't want to have happen is, if they have a major issue that impacts the design of this, I don't want to be so far down the path, that if, if they have a major issue that forces you to redesign it, let's give them the table.
They don't, there's no way, they don't have a major issue.
Well, I, I want them to go back, and I want them to say that.
They, like I said, the plan.
Do you have their letter there?
It's right here, it's right up there. That's, I mean, the Board of Health reviews the, each individual lot, when he comes in to build a particular lot, that's when they receive the septic plants, and that's when each goes before the Board of Health. What Michelle is writing is that, you know, the question is definitely on the table, if the homes are going to increase from a three-bedroom house, then that's the standard at which things might change, and you could address that, Phil.
Yeah, well, actually, she's wrong about the three-bedroom houses, because you get two-minute per inch perks out there, it's 440 gallons a day, that's going to be a 600 square foot system, so.
So, how many bedrooms is?
So, can you give her a polite response to that letter?
I could, I was just hoping we could close the hearing tonight.
No, we're not, we never close the hearing until we're ready to vote.
I just was hoping you'd be ready to vote this evening.
Yeah, we're not, we're nowhere close to being ready to vote this evening, so.
I see, I see Phil's response to Lisa, but not Lisa's follow-up.
We got the ace up. What's the last one you're looking at?
Was it, didn't Lisa respond on anything?
I got a couple from Lisa back and forth.
Yeah, there was one, one final comment from Lisa.
Hopefully, I got the PDF.
But, you know, we, we just got these things today, and I, I don't have all of the things that talked about, the waivers that you wanted in designing the thing, I don't have that to look at it, which I would normally do at home.
But we're not, we're not going to overtime, so.
Oh, it's an email, okay, but, then she also has something, she also has a comment 15, which is still open. So, yeah, that's.
There's none after that.
Well, then, that one we don't have, so.
So, I think there's, getting back to the point is, that I think for, there's a punch list of open things that we have to have addressed, are normal, including this subject of the, of the open space, and I think what we'll do is, we'll go through and, over the next two weeks, you need to work those issues out, and then we'll come in in two weeks, and we'll hopefully be able to have a discussion, close the hearing, and make a decision. So, there, there won't be any remaining things that we're uncertain about.
Do you have questions, though, that you'd like him to explain while he's here tonight on the engineering at the entrance of the road?
Well, the, the, in terms of drainage, in terms of site distance, sure, why not?
He had a specific question in the last meeting.
Okay. Did they get resolved?
Why is Adam look at it, what did Lisa say on?
Whatever happened to the drainage of the, of the pitch from the crown of the circle going into the center of the thing? I saw you said, we could change it if you want. Yeah. Lisa reviewed it, she didn't ask for it to be changed, it still goes into the center of that, you know. And the, the street drainage, that road pitches from west to east, the Barksford Street, so there's spot elevations shown on the entranceway on a detail of how the water will still flow from west to east across there. What else was there?
Was there anything, Lynn?
And we did additional testing that Lisa wanted.
So, for five seconds, site distance?
Oh, site distance is, I mean, it's not even an issue.
Is it level, or is it?
It's, it's, right, it's a straight pitch, the road is straight, it does pitch, but it's not like there's a hill, you know, you can see.
So, there's no hill or no curve?
You can see 300, 400 feet in either direction, so it's.
Do you have to do any clearing, right, like right at the intersection?
No, it's, it's, it's pretty good. I mean, you're going to do some construction, it's going to open it up a little bit, but, but no, there's enough shoulders you can see, and it's not like you, the road bends, so you have to see through the shoulder to see what's coming, you can see down the roadway. It's very, it's one of the few things about it that worked out well, yeah. As far as the Water Department goes, you know, we're putting in a new water line from Dunkin', from Brookview to the project, and Tim Willett has asked that we provide services to all of the homes along the way, as well as the water line, so we have to do that.
It looks like the DPW with the slope curving and the vertical curving took care of that current actual sway.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Pete, do you have any more questions? Laura?
The only thing I want to do is make sure that the waivers that they've requested, because he had it on 11, that we listed those things specifically.
Was two or something related to them?
Okay, I mean, let's, you're probably, the sooner you better, I mean, if, you know, a lot of them are probably pro forma, because anytime you let somebody, you know, at some point put in a cul-de-sac, it may be longer than, than we allow, but.
Also, the LID business.
The.
LID, because, yeah, narrow road street, no curve.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep, 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 okay, yeah, so that's fine, so. But, if you find any, that are issued, raise them now, I, I'm suspecting they all are based on, as Phil said, the development model, what they use, so, yeah, okay. You'll be our waiver expert.
I'm waiver.
Yeah, you're wavering on that, yeah, I like that, yeah, so. So, if, Christine, what might be a good idea is to make up a punch list of the open questions we have, and circulate it to everybody, so that we can see.
At this point, I'm trying to find the, I think you have, the question is, you're debating the, the open space, and whether Conservation Commission or the Heritage is, you know, if there's trails there.
Yes, but in preparation for that, we want to look at the, whatever trail network exists in the proximate areas, see if it even logically makes sense to do that.
Let's be more specific. Let's do any trails within a half-mile circumference of this property, so there's no question here, because we've asked this question two or three times, and not gotten the answer. So, within a half-mile radius of this project.
That's something the towns are going to do, we're not.
Yeah, we're not going to do it, yeah.
Town, town plan is going to do it.
Towns, we're going to get that from Conservation. And on the environment.
Does that include going over into Barksford? Because that, that circle would include Barksford.
There's a subdivision.
Yeah. No, the, the radius in the, we don't get it.
Okay. On the health, you'd like me to resolve, you want another letter from Board of Health?
Well, it's a little bit, I'd like to, I'd like to reach some additional clarity. I think that what I don't want to do is, the applicant disagrees with the position of the Board of Health, and I don't want this to be a problem down the road.
Okay. I will get that in writing, and the environment from Lisa, is there?
Well, whatever, I think there, didn't you say, Lynn, there were two or three of them?
It looks like there's still items that we haven't seen. I wanted, I want a letter from her saying that all her concerns have been addressed, because it doesn't.
That's on record, it's just.
Well, we don't have it, so.
Do you have one, Lynn, from August 12?
I.
One of the ones didn't transmit to the iPad, but I'm not sure if I, do you have something on August 12?
August 12, and it still says, per my previous, I do recommend, yeah, it's still open, yeah. I don't read that comment as being closed. I do recommend that some means of protecting the inside edge of pavement within the cul-de-sac be added.
But what did she say before that?
But it's, just letting you know that the, the 810 revisions on the project, but then, per my previous comment, she's still saying that.
Right, and, and my response to that was, it's up to the Planning Board and DPW to tell me what they want to do there. What Lisa's saying is, she's afraid the pavement on the inside of the cul-de-sac will start to break off, and she'd like to see some, I think she called it horizontal curbing, which. which I gathered to be.
Well, then that's still open for us to deal with, that's my.
That's for you guys to tell us if you want something different in the cul-de-sac other than a normal shoulder.
What did the DPW say?
Didn't hear anything with DPW.
They weren't asked, that's the problem, it's still open.
So, that's the answer to that, we need to ask.
Do you want to address this?
I'm, I'm not qualified to talk about horizontal.
We would like DPW to give us input on Lisa's comment on the shoulder and give us recommendations to advise us what they would like, you know, and then we'll review it. Not saying we'll agree, but we'll review.
So that's three specific items.
Right, plus whatever, based on your list that you're keeping, that is still open.
I think that was it, I mean, I think the, the open space was certainly a question of mine, that I wasn't really sure how the board was going to address that tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Okay.
We have a response from DPW on, from July 21st comments.
On 6:02?
Well, DPW issued their memo on July 20, as Phil responded, CSI responded July 21st, is there a, like, DPW after July 21st saying they accept Phil's comments?
I don't have any.
Yeah, so you need to close out DPW.
I'll, I'll make sure, I feel like there was, but.
So we need to close out letters from every single department that has to sign off, basically. If we don't have it already, we haven't seen it, we need them all.
All right. I think I have one close out there. Okay. All right.
We should probably do the executive decision down, because there's nobody else here, and then come back.
Well, so we just do the minutes.
Well, we have, watershed quality, planning rules and regulations.
It isn't really just discussion items.
What's that?
Aren't they just discussion items for us, like, can we move them to, like, the next meeting, is there anything we have to discuss?
I have like a two-second thing on the watershed.
Okay, well, let's continue then through the list, I, so, the, the Osgood.
Osgood, zoning board did not have quorum for August 11, so they've bumped it, they've tried to create another meeting for August 25th, and the folks from the Solar would like to continue this matter into September, and to be honest, I'm not sure if the zoning board, what I've heard is, I'm not sure if they have a quorum for the 25th, so.
So have they requested anything?
They've requested to continue the matter until September 2, but that would be assuming they'd be on your September 1st agenda, and I don't know if the matter will be resolved by zoning at that time.
That's, that's ridiculous.
So zoning actually had a meeting without a quorum?
They haven't had one.
No, no, they didn't.
Or they?
They, they had a quorum on the regular.
This is, this is not, no, 92 doesn't work. I mean, what the hell is this attorney doing, telling them that, you, you, you don't give the day just to the meeting date?
Why don't we let them withdraw and let them refile if we need?
Well, no, we, I don't think we want them to, we have more, we have more leverage. I mean, we could deny them. Because they haven't, the problem is, they haven't right now, in the past, they wanted to withdraw, but right now, they haven't, we don't have anything, a request for withdrawal. All we have.
Did they ever rescind their request for withdrawal?
I think we can allow it, yeah, we can either allow it or deny it.
Yeah, that's it.
What date do we have until now?
August something.
You have until, I believe, tomorrow, I think.
No, we have to be, it has to be exactly, we can't.
What was this date? I think it was tonight.
I believe it's the day after tomorrow. Do I have to take it out? Sorry.
They are continued until August 19th, 2015.
So, here's what I would suggest. I would suggest that you get in touch with them tomorrow morning, and that if, tell them we want a, a continuance of the decision date until the end of September.
September 30.
Till September 30, we'd actually like it longer than that, but at a minimum till September 30th, and if they don't, we're going to accept this because we have to tonight, but if they do not extend the date till September 30th, we're going to call a meeting and a special meeting, and we're going to just deny the application, so that they better get that, that extension to us.
Okay, let's just make sure that's, we'd have to call a special meeting tomorrow.
No, what we'll do is, part of the decision will be, we will accept the continuation that we're going to receive until the 30th, until, uh, September 30th.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, so, that's, tell them that, it's, we're, it's, it's annoying, the breakmanship is annoying, they should know better than not to do it a day past the day of the meeting, when they're not even sure when it's going to occur, it's, atop of everything else, it's an insult to us as a board to do something like that, so, go from there. So, would somebody like to make a motion, I think it's to accept the continuation of the time to make a decision to September 2nd, and to contingently accept the request that they will file till, for an extension until September 30th.
I'll make a motion that we accept the continuation for 1600 Osgood Street to September 2nd, 2015, and direct the planner to instruct them that we would like it till 9:30 15, or we may have to not continue it again.
Yeah.
May choose not to continue it the next time.
And that if that acceptance is, is provided, we hereby approve it.
We will approve, we will approve at 9:30.
We, yeah, we will have approved it, we, yes, will be, will be approved, yes, if received, will be approved.
I'm not sure, can we have a motion that we will approve something?
Yeah, I think so, in this case, and so.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, because if they don't, then, I mean, the worst comes to worst, and that night, the September 1st, we'll just deny the thing, and, you know, so.
Second. I'm not saying it over.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay, the watershed water quality?
So, I was asked to, you know, help work on this, and I did meet with Julie. And you had conflict, so couldn't join us, but we talked about a few measures that would make sense to the board without overloading us with, you know, data, and do a long-term trend line, which will probably be on the order of 2,000 to the present, and probably phosphate, nitrogen, fecal count, algae, and maybe one other, and basically just trend lines, the point of which would be to show, how's the lake doing?
Yeah.
And.
I mean, it's so simple, you wonder why we haven't done it all.
Well, you know, and so I did get an update, I talked to, well, traded an email with her today, and there, some of the data is in paper files, has to be put into a database, and making progress on that, the more recent stuff is put directly into a database, so that's much easier, but, you know, one of the takeaways from that was exactly what you just said, we, I, I take it from that conversation with her that we haven't taken a look at the trend, which by itself is a good reason to do it, I think.
So do we, so do you have any feeling, is it going, getting better or worse?
I, I don't yet, no.
Okay, so.
I, I literally don't have it, she did invite me to go out on a sample, and I got like a snapshot in time, and, you know, there, sort of just based on a snapshot, not a trend line, one of the things we're probably not going to put in the trend is the dissolved oxygen, because that gets pretty complicated, and you have to be careful not to draw the wrong conclusions from that, but on the day I went sampling, you know, the dissolved oxygen is, is very interesting, it, it's pretty good near the surface of the lake, down to maybe, you know, 20 feet, you know, eight, down to six, four, but when you get deeper than 20, 24 feet, it goes to, you know, almost zero, for a fairly significant portion of the bottom of the lake, so that's no oxygen down there, now what does that mean? That's a complicated question, and I think is, is a separate issue than these trend lines, but to answer your question, you know, what's my takeaway, was just that one observation from one day of sampling, and I don't know what, what the data is over the long term, but I'm, I mean, I think it'd be a very interesting thing to see.
Peter, are we going to get the numbers by the individual sample stations, I mean, do they, I think I recall you said that they, they take them consistently from the same areas?
They sample in multiple locations in the lake, at multiple depths, and they sample multiple, multiple tributaries, and of course, the tributaries are telling you what's draining in, and in very rough terms, from where, I mean, it doesn't say this property, it just, you know, from where that watershed drained, so I think the answer to that is, I'm not sure yet, because what she needs to do is take a look at how best to present the data so you can make some sense of it, so, so I'm not sure yet.
Was the point-in-time snapshot, a positive snapshot, I mean, the fecal matter and the whatever.
Oh, no.
Things besides the oxygen?
I didn't, just being out in the boat, I didn't get that, all, all you can see when you're out there is, you know, just the basic pH and dissolved oxygen, and, and also the clarity, and the clarity was actually pretty good, down to 10, 12 feet. So those other measures, you, that, that has to be done as a result of lab testing, and, and, you know, that's after, after the sampling, and I didn't see that. So that's it, yeah, and I'll follow up with Julie, and, you know, we'll continue, and I think she said, you know, sort of September-ish timeframe to pull all of this together? Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. Now, we don't have watershed informational mailing on the agenda still? But it's not on the agenda.
Watershed water quality's on the agenda, we have packets on the mailings here.
Okay, but we want it on the agenda, we want to carry it on, as a line item on the agenda, we talked about that last meeting, too.
The watershed water quality?
Two different things, one is the mailing, we, it's actually in the minutes, too, if you want to go back and look, that we actually wanted two line items, because it's two separate items, one is to measure the lake, trends on the lake quality, and one is for the watershed information, so can we make sure that's on the agenda?
Would you like to go through the mailings now, or do you want to further?
No, I don't think, I think you can close your discussion. Yeah, I think we can, you can distribute them, and we can hold up for the next meeting and have a line item on the agenda for it.
Do you want to review the minutes before?
But they, there was one on planning board rules and regulations.
Yes, planning board rules and regs, it's something, you guys also talked about researching, I've been researching them, and in regards to performance bonds, and I've worked with the DPW, they've been sending me some information on how they set their bond rates, and I did a query to the state planners, and to be honest, I didn't get a great response on other communities that utilize bonds, they, a few responded back, they tie the closing of a permit to certificate of occupancy, so they don't utilize bonds for a site plan or some of these other projects, other than subdivision, so, but I also, part of what you were asking for was a little bit more uniformity in how you set your bond rates for watershed permits, and also the rules and regulations where you put that authority in that language. Planning boards typically have rules and regulations that are adopted by the board, they're not part of the zoning bylaw, I've got about nine of them, I've been kind of reading them and looking for the, kind of the best language of them to present that to you, so that you could add a section for your performance guarantees, so I've been compiling that for you, and I just wanted to let you know that we're moving forward on that one.
Okay. Okay, minutes?
Two sets of minutes, I hope there were more to your liking?
There's still a lot of verbatim in there, way too much, it's, they, they should be, they should be, did you have Jean look at them and help you out?
No, we consolidated them, we tried to make it conversational, and.
We didn't want it conversational, that's just a little bit more of a synopsis opposed to conversational.
Do you want to take the names of the comments out, is that?
I think what we're getting at is if you go back to a sample of the minutes from, I don't know, maybe the spring, and see that they're really summarizing the comments rather than repeating them.
More brief, yeah.
Characterizing the comments rather than repeating them.
I'll give you a sample, on July 7th, maybe any minutes, you have line 14 into line 15, where the applicant says, "We have since sold the home and relocated," has absolutely nothing to do with the application, it's a comment, yes, it happened, yes, but it had nothing to do with anything that we were reviewing, it's, "I went to the supermarket," I don't need that in there, you know, it's, so those type of things need to be taken out, some of the things, it can be more general, you can combine like 10 sentences into like part two, you know, you know, general discussion about fencing, yard waste, things like that, you know, it'd set up two paragraphs, so, a synopsis. Like, when you bought the cliff notes, when you didn't do your book report in school.
Although the yard waste was a specific.
Correct, I'm just, yes, these are general, yeah, like you said, the specific comments.
Somebody says something funny, we should put it in.
Put a little star next to it, yeah, John made a funny.
Okay, but with that as a caveat, you will prove as is, or with the subject?
I, I really think we want to, I, I'm not ready to prove them yet, there's still way too much conversational, I still, this was an hour meeting.
Well.
Bye.
I agree. I think there's more work.
Okay.
Let's just get it right.
And both minutes or just the seventh?
The both.
Okay, with that as prologue, we'll go into the meaty part of the, the meeting executive session, oh boy.
In order to, and, do you have to?
Yes, we have to, each person has to say.
Do you want to close the regular?
No, you don't close the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, you just, you make a motion, somebody make a motion that we go into executive session, and then we can read it, each person can.
I move we go to Louis.
And then each person has to.
Carol provided.
Oh, good.
So that's for John.
Yeah. Typically, we've had something to read, so.
Okay, okay, the board will go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with counsel in the matter of first, city development versus Town and North Anover and Town and North Anover Planning Board. The chair has determined that an open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigation position, the board will adjourn from the executive session, and will not reconvene in open session after the executive session. So we make a motion by roll call vote, and I'll pass this around so everybody who can do it, it's, but it's, I move, Carol, isn't each person supposed to do it?
No, just one person, just one motion.
Okay.
Whatever, I'll call those.
Okay.
I move that the board go into executive session to confer with counsel concerning strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of first city development versus the town of North Andover and the North Andover Planning Board.
Somebody second?
I second.
Okay, so, and each person votes, so if you can just say aye.
I thought I didn't have a vote, but aye.
And aye?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you.
We now turn off.
The, I think we're done on the TV now, so thank you. You did a great job tonight. Were you amused?